Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and is being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10:4-6 at Sec. of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. Nora, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Didich.
Yeah.
Mr. Dinsmore.
Here.
Mr. Pedgeri.
Here.
Ms. Hernandez.
Here.
Mr. Mealy.
Here.
Mr. Napolitano. Nope, he's here somewhere.
Yes. Yes. Nick?
Ms. Veely.
Here.
Chairman Von Aiken.
Here.
We also have with us our board planner, Ms. Favate, our board engineer, Mr. Canjiano, and our board attorney, Mr. Wenzel.
Thank you very much. Would everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Welcome to our planning board meeting on this date, October 18th, 2021. This meeting is open to the general public. If there are any members of the public who would like to bring up any topics of conversation which are not on the agenda, please come forward at this time. Seeing nobody come forward, we will close the public portion. And on our agenda for tonight, we have approval of our calendar. Has everybody received the calendar and had a chance to review it? Speak now or forever hold your peace. I'll go ahead and accept a motion on this calendar.
So moved, Dinsmore.
All right, Dinsmore to approve the calendar.
Second, Napolitano.
Napolitano, second. Nora, would you please call the roll?
Didich.
Yes.
Dinsmore.
Yes.
Pedgeri.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Mealy.
Yes.
Napolitano.
Yes.
Veely.
Yes.
Von Aiken.
Yes. Okay. Next up, we have our resolutions. I believe these will have to be called separately. So we will start off with Resolution 21-510, which is Globe Logistics. Which one of these was the minor?
That's a major.
Oh, okay.
That was a full board.
Erin was the minor.
All right. So with that said, I assume everybody has received and reviewed the resolution. Are there any comments to be made at this time? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and accept a motion on this resolution.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mr. Mealy.
A motion to approve the resolution for Globe Logistics Incorporated, 939 Edwards Road, Block 767, Lot 31, Application 21:510, Preliminary and Final Major Site Plan for Construction of Flex Space.
Do we have a second for Mr. Mealy?
Second, Didich.
All right, we have a second. Nora, please call the roll.
Didich.
Yes.
Dinsmore.
Yes.
Pedgeri.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Mealy.
Yes.
Napolitano.
Yes.
Veely.
Yes.
Von Aiken.
Yes. All right. Resolution on Application Number 21-513, RV RSA 99 Green Bank. All right.
Lot 493, Lot 1, and move we grant the, or suggest to the council, the major soil move permit.
So noted. Do we have a second?
Second for Jerry.
All right. Nora, please call the roll.
Didich.
Yes.
Dinsmore.
Yes.
Pedgeri.
Yes.
Mealy.
Yes.
Napolitano.
Yes.
Veely.
Yes.
Von Aiken.
Yes. All right, now this one's our minor, correct?
Correct.
All right, so only members of the minor committee will be voting or making a motion on this. That's Application Number 21:511.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mr. Mealy.
A motion to approve the resolution for Firing Properties Incorporated, 100 Interpace Parkway, Block 136, Lot 43.1, Application Number 21:511, Minor Site Plan and Minor Soil Moving Permit.
Do we have a second?
Second, Didich.
Okay. Nora, please call the roll.
Didich.
Yes.
Dinsmore.
Yes.
Mealy.
Yes.
Veely.
Yes.
All right, very good. That takes care of our resolutions for this evening. And next we have Application Number 21-519, Statewide Striping Corp., 499 Pomeroy Road. Do we have the applicant present?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
All right. If you wouldn't mind introducing yourself and the application, and then we'll have the waivers reviewed by our planner.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. My name is Nicole Magdziak, M-A-G-D-Z-I-A-K, of the Law Firm Day Pitney here in Port Sidney. I'm here this evening on behalf of the applicant Statewide Striping in connection with an application for preliminary and final site plan approval and variance relief related to onsite storage containers. These containers are existing onsite. The applicant received a violation notice from the zoning department and which led to this application being filed to correct the, or to obtain the appropriate variance relief and approvals for the onsite containers. So we are speaking several checklist waivers which are identified in your board planner, Ms. Favate's review letter. I don't know if you'd like us to go through them, or...
Would you prefer to review them yourself?
I could do it very quickly. Mr. Chairman, we recommended granting a number of waivers that are generally associated with actual building construction or site disturbance. And because this basically is legalizing or seeking to legalize an existing condition in existing paved areas, we recommended a number of waivers, which I don't need to go through individually. But I will highlight that they are exempt from highlands review because there is no change to impervious coverage or land disturbance. And then on the DEP, Letter of Interpretation on Wetlands, again, it's, everything is occurring in an existing paved area. So pretty much all the others deal with the lack of a building and the lack of site disturbance.
Okay. Do we have a motion to accept the waivers as presented by Ms. Favate?
So moved, Dinsmore.
All right. Do we have a second?
I'll second, Hernandez.
Okay. We'll do this by a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, none. So we'll accept the waivers as written. Thank you. You may continue.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. This particular piece of property is located at 499 Pomeroy Road, which is Block 736.01, Lot 2. It's on the part of the town that is adjacent to Route 287. It is in the SED 5 zone. The use on the property is existing and there is no proposed change to the use on the property. There's also, as we heard during the waiver discussion, no proposed changes to the actual site itself in terms of site disturbance or anything like that. And as I had mentioned, these storage containers are existing on the site. So I have with me Robert Wilson, who is a representative of the applicant, who will lead us through a discussion of sort of the history of this property, how these storage containers came to be on the property, what they're currently used for, what the intended use is moving forward, which is consistent with how they've been used for the last 20 or so years since they've been there. And he can run us through just the general operations, number of employees, hours, shifts, all the details related to this particular operation at the site.
Okay.
You started going to ask me questions.
Well, first, if you can provide your name for the board.
Rob Wilson. I'm sorry. Okay, no problem. Do you swear for until, uh, truth for this planning board tonight?
I do.
Okay. Can you please state and spell your name for the record?
Robert Wilson, W-I-L-S-O-N.
Okay. And as indicated by counsel, Mr. Wilson is testifying as a fact witness, not as an expert. So why don't we get the preliminary questions as to who Mr. Wilson is?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Wenzel. Mr. Wilson, can you please provide for the board your position at the applicant entities at Statewide Striping, how long you've been there?
I'm CFO and I'm half owner. I've been there for 25 years.
And has Statewide Striping been at this property for approximately that same amount of time?
Yes, I think in 1998 we moved in.
And when were these storage containers brought to the site?
I think probably 2001, right after the year 2000.
And how are these storage containers used?
They use, we store small amounts of waterborne paint and some of their other products which are thermoplastics, which we use for the striping operation. We do line striping on roads, parking lots, highways.
And can you describe a little bit about how this particular building is used in connection with your striping operation and the storage containers?
It's for office space and for staging. Our, we're out in the field all the time, so this is where our workers come in, they punch in. We do maintenance there and we store materials there.
And how many employees do you have?
Around, right now, about 45.
And do they work on shifts?
Yes, they do. Typically, it's a day shift, but we'll work from 6:00 to 6:00, basically. We do have nighttime operations, you know, we do it whenever time they pave a road, we have to be there to stripe it. But most of our operations are between 6:00 and 6:00.
And how many shifts do you have?
They're not, it's not like a shift operation at a factory. We come in typically before 6:00 AM to get out on the roads as soon as you can get on them, some restrictions. And then we come in in the afternoon because we have to not be on it during rush hour traffic, but there are times when we can go later.
And in connection with your operations, do you store anything else on the site such as equipment or trucks?
Yes, equipment and trucks.
And those are all stored in the rear of the property, correct?
Yes.
And in terms of the storage containers that are out there, can you just describe the locations of them?
One is in the back, against the back panel, in between our entrance, where we're a drive-in entrance, and our loading dock, and one's on the far side, which would be by the water tower.
And are both of those containers set back far enough and/or blocked by the building such that you cannot see them from the road?
From the road, you can't. From the front, you can't. From the back, from, I guess, one of our neighbors could see maybe the back. The other side by the water tower, you can't see that.
So they are, for the most part, shielded from the public view?
Yes.
And is there any other storage that occurs in the rear of the building near those storage containers?
We had noticed that we store sometimes pallets. We get all of our material, most of our material on pallets. And when we unload the pallets, we store them there and they're taken out during the week. So on the end of the week, they'll be taken out, and the beginning of the week, they'll load up until there's enough to bring someone in and remove the pallets.
So you temporarily store the pallets there while you're waiting for them to be removed?
Yes.
And how frequently are they moved?
Usually weekly, depending if we're not busy during the winter months when we're not, then it may be two weeks, but typically once a week. We go through a lot of material.
And in addition to the materials that you have onsite, you have trash enclosures onsite, correct?
Yes. We have two dumpsters, one for recycled cardboard and one for garbage.
And how frequently are those picked up?
I don't know. I think once or twice a week.
And switching gears to the parking that is currently onsite, it was noted in the board engineer's review letter that there is a wood chip path that leads to the neighboring property. Can you describe what that path is for and how that impacts your parking?
At times, we have, when our employees are real busy, we have more, we have additional parking required next door. So we have an agreement with the next door neighbor. We've made a path and we park in the back far lot in their parking lot, which they don't use.
So you have an agreement with that neighbor to use that?
It's a verbal agreement. We do not have a written agreement.
And have you had an issue with parking on the site?
Not because of that, no.
We have one other question that is in the board planner's review letter that relates to the bollards that are shown. So on the photographs, we show two bollards in the rear of the property, and the survey currently shows five. We will update the plans to correctly reflect the number of bollards that are up there, correct?
I guess. I don't know how many bollards are there. I suppose there'd be personally odd. If we need five, I don't know why we don't have that many there. As it's in the back front.
Okay, so, but we can comply with the planner's comment to address their comments. And we are in receipt of the October 8th Board Engineer Review Letter and the planner's September 29th letter. We will comply or end or address to the satisfaction of each of those professionals' comments that are in their letter that we have received. We do not have any further testimony from this witness at this time.
Okay. Before you continue, Mr. Chair, I just want to clarify something for the record, and I should have done it. I was remiss not to do it at the beginning when Statewide Striping first began their testimony. But I just want to be clear that I think the board members realize that Ms. Veely is off of the dais for this application. And I want to make clear as to why that is and advise the board as this. Ms. Veely, as you well know, has a role here in the township as a zoning officer. And in that capacity, she has played a role with regard to code enforcement at this site. And she does have pre-knowledge of this site and of this issue with the containers. So to avoid any appearance of impropriety or pre-decision, not that I would suspect that of Ms. Veely, I think she would give every applicant decided on its merits, but to avoid the appearance of any impropriety, Ms. Veely has stepped off the dais. She's not in the penalty box. She's in, stepped off the dais. And she may provide some further insight as to the history here if the board wishes. And for that reason, it would be inappropriate for her to be on the dais serving in this quasi judicial capacity. So that's why we have Ms. Veely off to the side. I just want to make sure that's clear for the record. And she will not be participating in discussion or the vote on this matter. All right. Thank you, Mr. Wenzel. Ms. Favate, did you have any questions?
Um, I just, a couple of points of clarification. I don't know that there's an actual requirement on the number of bollards. Really, it's kind of up to you in terms of the operation and what, you know, what will create a safe flow. I just want, we basically want to make sure everything is consistent. So whatever's on the survey or the site plan is what's actually on the ground. So that was the other part of our memo, is that if there are other aspects back there in terms of additional storage containers, let's go ahead and get them all on the site plan now so that we all are working from the same baseline. But I think, I think Mr. Canjiano said something similar. So let's just do it as built would be, I think, a requirement for approval.
Okay. And Mr. Canjiano, did you have anything more to add?
Um, just as, you know, just to review the site, the trash enclosure you mentioned is kind of in a state of disrepair. There's no gate in front of it. And at the photo that I see, there's an additional trash dumpster outside. I mean, that may have been just for that day, but there's an additional trash dumpster outside of that enclosure. So I don't think that's the intent to have these trash dumpsters throughout the site.
Yeah, we, we've gotten a lot busier over the last few years, so we generate a lot more trash, if you will. Most of it's pails and wrappings for our materials. So we have a bigger dumpster than we had before. It wouldn't fit within that enclosure that we originally had back there, which was a small dumpster and a recycled dumpster for cardboard.
In response to the board engineer's comments, can we consolidate that area and sort of tidy it up?
We could tidy it up. It'd be difficult to consolidate because we run out of room. There's a slope because of the drive-in, I mean, because of the loading dock. It's dug down, so there's a slope there. The larger dumpster would not fit in between, in the area where we have the fence and the smaller dumpster now. It's off to the back end farther.
I mean, just to, I guess, follow along. I don't object to an additional dumpster as long as it's shown on the plan.
Okay.
Okay, well, that's what you need for, you know, for a clean operation.
And counsel, I think, would you agree that the applicant will, as a condition of approval, agree to tidy up the area? That's probably not going to be in the resolution. It's probably going to be much more brilliant legal language. But tidy up and provide the necessary receptacles to ensure that trash is maintained in orderly fashion?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. With all the questions from our professionals out of the way, any members of the board have questions?
Ms. Veely has anything?
Maybe Ms. Veely is. Ms. Veely is now professional.
Oh, she's a professional in our, right, in this position?
In this position.
Okay.
Uh, the, am I working now? The only thing I would suggest adding, just like Susan said, for, you have a fuel station at the back of the park. I would add that to the site plan.
Okay.
For future record, just so that in 10, 15 years, and I'm not the zoning officer, no one questions how that became on the site and the bollards, because that is on the site. And I know you got permits for that. I would add that to the site plan. That's it.
Okay. All right. Any questions from members of the planning board?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I'm just looking, I guess, at the stock photo on Google from November 2020. Can I show this to them?
Let me, let me state this. I know, I know we are, we are in a digital age. Right. But we, we cannot rely on any document that isn't submitted by the applicant. Okay. Or anyone else. But perhaps, Mr. Napolitano, you know from your general knowledge of the area and your years of living in town.
Yeah.
That you're aware of the area, and perhaps you have a question about that.
I doubt the use of our friend, Mr. Google.
When I drove by one day.
Uh, should, should the garbage area be enclosed?
You're asking me?
Is, is the garbage area enclosed?
Not the extra dumpster. No, it's not.
Okay. And is there gas stored back there?
It's, no, there's diesel fuel stored on the far other side, the other corner of the property.
Okay.
We don't have gasoline. Is the diesel fuel, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, but I just, this is, Mr. Napolitano has piqued my own health and safety interest. The diesel fuel, is that in a, in enclosure or is it, or is it outside?
It's outside. It's in, but it's protected with bollards. It's a double line tank.
Oh, okay.
With monitoring on it.
Okay. We're, we're, the chairman and I are straining our eyes. We're getting old.
If you look at, from the front of the building, it's in the back left-hand corner.
Okay.
So there is an area that was submitted as part of the application area?
We do see bollards on the site plan and...
What's underneath the bollards? Bollards, something in storage container. I can't read that.
Covered entry?
And that other one?
Oh, the other bollards. Propane storage?
Underneath the red bollards?
Looks like COVID entry.
Propane storage.
There's propane, yes, we have. We have a rack.
So just, just to clear up the record, Mr. Lee's giving me a face. To clear, no, no, she's not. Just to clear up the record, we're talking about there's, there is some indication of bollards on the, sorry, Chairman.
Sheet two.
On sheet two, and at the bottom of it, there was some pondering as to what that was identifying. Counsel, can you, can you have, Mr. Wilson, just identify what that is, just so we're clear?
Oh, that, that's where we have, we also have propane. We have a 20-pound propane that we use for some of, most of our forklifts and for some torching when we're out in the field.
Okay. All right. Anybody else? Any other questions from the board? All right. I do have the pictures here, but could you just describe the nature of the containers for us?
The containers that, that you get at the port, that they pick up and put down on, that no one has enough of right now in the United States. So retired containers that we'll put back there.
So they're like shipping containers?
Shipping containers, yes. Okay. And the, the materials you're storing in there, the paints and plastics, those are?
Yes.
Unused materials, or if they?
No, that we store them there. Yes, we bring them in and out occasionally.
Okay. But as you indicated, you have separate area for trash. This is for things that you're storing.
Storing, yes.
Okay. All right. Any other questions?
I could, um...
Ms. Favate?
I, I think Mr. Napolitano started to ask the question, but I guess as part of the tidying up, is it possible to enclose more of these storage, you know, storage units and/or pallets? Because that's essentially what you're seeking the variance for, is not being able to screen the outdoor storage. If it's possible to screen more of it, I think that would be preferable. If not, then the board will have to write in a full variance.
Well, the, the, you can't see the, any of the pallets near your neighbors or from the front. You can see the pallets are in the back. It'll face the building far right in corner back by the water tank. So you can't see the pallets.
Right.
To enclose the big dumpster would require a large area because you have to take it. It's one of those they pull in and pull out.
Okay.
Down the back. And so it would be difficult. You'd have to make an extremely large area for that. And there, it is on a slope.
Okay. So that would be a challenge with your operations.
So I'm not sure there's an appropriate place to do that.
Okay. Yeah, I just, I wanted to make clear to the board if it wasn't, that is the variance being sought.
Okay, thank you.
It's for outdoor screening.
Okay. Right.
So that there are some materials that are being left out that will be unscreened due to the nature of the, of the lot, its particular physical characteristics.
Correct.
Would you agree with that, Ms. Favate?
I would.
Are the storage containers somehow, I know they got there somehow, but are they somehow secured so that they're not going to be, I know they're very heavy, but I don't know if they are secured at all, or they just, they are?
No. No. They, they're, I'd take something pretty big to move those containers. They're heavy.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Dinsmore.
I'm assuming that when you have materials in there, they are locked and secured as to somebody, a trespasser, trying to perhaps steal them or...
We've had no thefts of anything. There's nothing there that's worth taking. If you, I mean, there're buckets of paint, but it's not like you paint your house with it. So there's really nothing there that we lock up. And we do usually have people there most of the hours, but those, those containers are not locked because it's not really security to, if nothing has it, it's worth stealing. We haven't had any. It's out of the way. There's not much traffic. It is all camera, the whole operation, the whole site is. Any trespassing, we pick up on.
And I'm assuming that you're indicating that none of the materials stored in this are dangerous or...
No. We're inspected by the fire inspector on a regular basis. And although we have some, most of our, almost all of our materials are waterborne. That's the regulations from the Environmental Protection Agency and local. We do have gas cans which are, we are stored appropriately through, as our inspections with the fire department.
Okay.
We don't have any hazardous materials.
And these, these containers are opened and closed and materials are exchanged periodically, so?
Yes.
There's regular traffic going through there?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Seeing nobody else with questions?
One more, Mr. Chairman, I apologize. One more.
Please go ahead.
Thank you. Okay, so now I'm matching a picture and plan. Okay, so according to the, this here, the site plan here, the chain link fence comes out and then stops. And then on this side, it says stockade fence. But according to this picture, it looks like it's closed. Is that area closed?
And what are you pointing at?
Is that accurate? Do you see what I'm saying? So this picture looks like it's closed fence?
Hold on one second.
Yeah, it appears that the...
But this, there's not closed here, though.
Has the fence been updated since the survey?
Don't know. I don't know what was...
Survey.
And then the survey should, or plan should be updated to match the current condition
if, if the fence was updated. The photo appears to look like the fence is relatively new, but the, it doesn't really match the site plan.
On the fence, I'm, I'm not sure which fence you're talking about. Is it on the far right of the building?
So the one in front of the bollards and the propane storage?
The trash enclosure area.
In the back?
Yes.
I believe it's open. I do not believe it's closed.
So is this not the right picture then?
Oh, yeah. That, that is all brand new. Yes, it does open.
Okay. So this, this will all be part of, I think counsel will agree with me, this is all part of what the updated as-built.
Okay.
Is going to demonstrate.
Yeah.
It's all new fencing.
No.
What we're talking about is that that needs to be updated.
This has to be updated. This is an accurate picture. This is an accurate picture.
That's an accurate picture.
Which actually shows that some of it is enclosed.
Right.
But for... It's all new fencing.
Okay, gotcha. I understand the site. Thank you.
Just not the container itself.
Exactly. Okay. All right. So for, for clarification, this, this is about the variance regarding the enclosure of these storage containers, correct?
And that the storage containers are permanent, where the zoning department only allows them to be temporary, six months. So since they're going to stay there permanent, I need to issue a permit. I can't do that unless the board approves permanent storage containers.
Okay. And so that's what we're making a judgment on as to whether or not they can allow these structures to be permanent parts of their site plan. All right?
And is there, is there?
Not enclosed.
Is there a difference between storage container and garbage container? Are these, are they both considered the same thing?
The two, the two containers are storage containers. The dumpsters are right in front of their loading bays, which we don't have a problem with.
Gotcha.
Because they, they, sometimes they're there and sometimes they're not.
Okay. But the storage container behind that, that one there we're talking about?
Yes. And the, the fence that you're talking about is a new fence. That was a requirement of my fire prevention department.
Okay.
And that fence goes almost from like the corner of the container around and ends at the other side of the container with a gate. And it protects everything, the propane tanks and everything that's in there. That's a fire prevention requirement. They, they met every requirement that fire prevention and construction and zoning asked of them. The only two that they couldn't meet were these permanent containers.
Okay. So now that I, we've made it clear what, what the, the application is about here, are there any other questions that you have for the witnesses? Witness. Okay. In that case, I'll allow you to make a closing statement.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As was stated, we are here this evening on behalf of statewide striping in order to make legal and approve these two storage containers, which have been on the site for twenty years, approximately twenty years. As you've heard from the applicant, they are actively using these in connection with their operation on the site. They are screened from view, from at least the public view on the road. They will comply with all of the comments that are issued in your board planner and board engineer report, in addition to those additional conditions that we discussed this evening. And most importantly, I believe, to be the as-built survey, which we will have updated to make sure appropriately reflects everything that's on the site currently. And we hope that you look favorably upon our application.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And just so I'm not negligent in forgetting about the general public, I'll go ahead and open it up to the general public for any questions or comments about this application. Seeing nobody come forward, I'll close the public portion, and I will open it up for a motion on this application. Go ahead, Ms. Hernandez.
Okay, Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to accept application number twenty-one colon five-one-nine statewide striping corporation, four ninety-nine Pomeroy Road, block seven thirty-six point one, lot two, preliminary, final major site plan with C variance to legalize two storage containers with updates to the as-built to reflect the current conditions?
I think you got it all?
Okay.
With the, the conditions of approval that we, that have been agreed on to comply with the board engineer's letter, the board planner's letter, and to provide an updated as-built. Right, Ms. Hernandez?
Right.
Okay. Do we have a second for Ms. Hernandez's motion?
Second, Mealy.
All right. Any commentary from the board regarding the motion?
One small one. I would have difficulty with this in almost any other location with any other history. But because of the location and the history, I feel comfortable with this application.
Seeing as there's been no complaints in the twenty-year period?
That's included, yes. That's inherent. But if somebody wanted to do that in a number of other places I can think of, I would be opposed.
Okay. Fairly said. Yes, Mr. Dede?
Just a late thought, but just wanted to throw it out there. Is there any environmental concern because the paint would be out there in the open and it could spill, go, go in the ground, any, any?
I think you can, um... We need an expert witness for that. Well, I, I, I think you can at least hear from the applicant as to how these things are, the paint is...
Waterborne paint, it's epoxy, waterborne epoxy. Thermal plastic, which is powder, it's melted. So we've had the, we had the town over there inspecting everything we've had there, and there was no, we remedied a small complaint we had, and there's, none of the material we use is deemed hazardous.
And it's DEP approved?
Yes, absolutely. We, we transport it on the roads every day, and our trucks are all DEP approved, and everything's proved that way. We're inspected regularly by them.
All right, that closes the concern to my head.
All right. All right. So any other questions specific to the motion that was given, though? Okay. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and take the vote. Nora, would you please call the roll?
Dede?
Yes.
Dinsmore?
Yes.
For Jerry?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Mealy?
Yes.
Napolitano? Yes.
Von Aken?
Yes. All right, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Have a good evening. Thank you for your time. All right. Is there any more business from any members of the board tonight? All right. Seeing none, I'll go ahead and open it up for a motion to close the meeting.
So moved for Jerry?
All right. Moved by, for Jerry, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, second Hernandez. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None? We are adjourned. Thank you.